I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for January 23. First order of business would be invocation by County Manager, Ms. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and grant them wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Tonight, as we recognize retirees for their faithful service and contributions to the citizens of Onslow County, we ask that you give them direction and wisdom as they enter this next phase of their lives. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you glory, honor, and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessing you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A pledge of allegiance by Deputy County Manager, Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming tonight. I don't think we have any elected officials in the audience. We ask that all in attendance please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period shall be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not the one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium up front here and begin their remark by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period unless on the end of the agenda. I would now entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes prevail. Approval of the items on the consent agenda. I will ask any member of this Board if they have any item that's on the consent agenda that they would like to have removed for discussion later or considered separately. If not, I entertain a motion to adopt this consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Public comment section number three. Ms. Cotton, has anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations under section I. The retirees' recognition. Yes, our Human Resources Director, Ms. Kennett, will handle that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The Onslow County Board of Commissioners is proud of the contributions made to the community by our county employees. Recently, several employees have chosen to retire from employment with the county. The Onslow County Board of Commissioners will honor each retired employee for their excellent service. Each retired employee will be presented with a special award from the Office of the Governor, Roy Cooper, as well as an award of appreciation from Onslow County Government. As the retiree's name is called, the retiree is asked to come forward to the front of the room with any family members that are present. The Employees Department Head is also asked to stand with the retiree. Following the presentation of the awards, the retiree will be awarded the opportunity to make a statement to the public if they desire. And if the Commissioners would, please come down. Our first retiree this evening is Biba Thomas, Certified Nursing Aid with the Onslow County Senior Services Department for her 23 years of loyal service. Ms. Thomas retired July 1, 2018.
Thank you for serving for us. You have a pile of certificates.
All kinds of stuff to hang on the wall.
One from Onslow County Government, one from the Old North State, signed by the Governor. Certificate of appreciation. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Get her home.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations.
Give him a vacation. Right, you guys.
I don't know what to say, but thank you, everybody.
Our second retiree this evening is Fay T. Coleman, Daycare Aid with the Onslow County Senior Services Department for her 25 years of loyal service. Ms. Coleman retired November 1, 2018.
Twenty-five years.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving.
Thank you for allowing me to.
Can you stay on a few more years?
I'll have to call back.
Onslow County Government, a plaque for you.
Thank you.
One from Governor Roy Cooper.
Thank you.
And then one from, honey again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service. And when you get done going down the line, you can feel free to give us about a 20-minute speech.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Just want to thank the county, my boss, Chris, thank the County Commissioners, and thank the citizen of Onslow County for allowing me to serve these years, and I thank you.
Our next retiree this evening is Alan Colvin, Processing Unit Supervisor with the Onslow County Health Department for his 20 years of loyal service. Mr. Colvin retired November 1, 2018.
Thank you so much for serving. Like some of the rest, a plaque from Onslow County, certificate from the Governor of the state of North Carolina, and another certificate from Onslow County, and thank you so much for your service, and we appreciate what you've done. We can ask you to stay on a few more years if you like.
She already tried.
And I know you're gonna say she's the boss, but really, you're the boss.
Well, she tried to tell me that.
You guys are the boss.
Yeah.
You citizens from Onslow County are our boss, so we do what you want us to do.
Do we find?
Keep him out of the rocket chair.
All right. I'm not Alan, but he asked me to speak on his behalf and just say that he appreciates the opportunity to serve Onslow County and the citizens after being able to serve our country. So I appreciate his service as well.
And our final retiree this evening is Carol Dudley, Public Health Nursing Supervisor with the Onslow County Health Department for her 15 years of loyal service. Ms. Dudley retired December 1, 2018.
Thank you for your service. You're not gonna stay no longer than what we got you down for?
Well, 42 years of nursing, I was ready.
You missed the start of the year, like 13.
Not quite.
We've got a certificate from the Governor of the state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper. Carol, we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
And then we have a certificate from the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. If you go down and say a few words, we appreciate that.
Thank you. 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 Driveway access agreement, Tar Landen Church.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a request from Tar Landen Baptist Church to establish a driveway connection between the Public Safety Memorial Parking Lot and the existing driveway at Tar Landen Baptist Church. The Church and the county already have a standing agreement that allows the church access to the Public Safety Memorial Parking Lot. The proposal would establish a 12-foot by 20-foot driveway connection between the two, and the church has offered to pay $500 annually to assist with the maintenance of the parking lot due to any potentially, or potential increases in traffic through the parking lot as a result of the driveway connection. The driveway connection would allow a more safe option for those at the church to be able to access Highway 24 or 258. Right now, having to cross multiple lanes of traffic to be able to head back south towards the city of Jacksonville. And also, there's a future transportation project that would establish a super street connection, or a super street section of roadway between Northwest Corridor Boulevard and Inslee Highway 53 that would require traffic to access the roadway and perform a U-turn movement to be able to head back south on 24258. So the driveway connection would allow them to be able to pass through the parking lot on Northwest Corridor Boulevard, access the stoplight, and then be able to make a more safe traffic movement to be able to head back towards the city of Jacksonville. So the request and action this evening is to approve the driveway access agreement and to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second that motion, and I want to thank the church. I know some of the members are probably here in the audience, and I want to thank them for their partnership, because we wouldn't have the parking lot we have today for our public safety. They've done a lot, worked very hard with us, with Jack and myself, and the Commissioners that are on staff when that came to be. But the church was a very good partnership, and I want to thank the church for helping us with that. And this is a no-brainer.
I've got a question. When the driveway is connected from their parking lot to the Public Safety Memorial Parking Lot, they come out the exit, where the exit is, on Northeast Boulevard?
Northwest Corridor. Yes, sir.
Now, did they have to make a right and go down and make a U-turn and come out?
Yes, sir.
They're not gonna be able to make a cut across the median, are they?
Not at this time. As part of the super street improvements on 24258, there will be some intersection changes at our Northwest Corridor or Boulevard intersection, and it's possible there may be another median break or some way to shorten that distance for them to be able to perform that U-turn movement. But they would have to take a right out of that parking lot and go down, turn, or make a U-turn and come back to the traffic signal.
Okay. Now, the long-range planning for that was, some of the problems that was created is 24, Highway 24 is gonna have a physical barrier instead of a turning lane, or instead of a, poor people just can't turn. They're not gonna be able to come out of the church parking lot, turn left. They're gonna have to have another way out. So that's their only access.
Yes, sir.
For left turns.
Right. They'll have a median section.
That'll be a protected left turn with a traffic signal.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Any questions from any of the Board?
It's an excellent opportunity for us to be able to partner with the church and be good neighbors with them.
Absolutely.
And they've been good neighbors with us, like you said.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fee waiver for North Carolina Department of Transportation. That'll be Ms. Angela Lee, our Health Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. In preparation for future response efforts, the North Carolina Immunization Program is supplying state-provided vaccine to local health departments. This is specifically TDAP and tetanus vaccines, and it is for the NC DOT employees that are considered disaster responders. The goal is to provide this free of charge, and again, the Division of Public Health has provided guidance to health departments that we make this available free of charge. Thus, the health department is requesting to waive our $30 administration fee. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners allow the health department to waive the administration fee for tetanus for NC DOT employees who are disaster responders.
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
And this is for future situations?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Lee, just, we spoke earlier, just for everyone to know, that that's, waiving that administrative fee is really a minimal cost to us for a really large return in case we face with something and needing those responders here.
Yes, sir. That administration fee covers just our staff time to provide the vaccine, our needles, our Band-Aids, which of course, we try to buy in bulk, so we keep the cost down. And we have no way of knowing at this time how many employees that will cover, so if approved tonight, we'll reach out to DOT and try to arrange in orderly and organized fashion to be able to meet their needs.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, I'd entertain a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. The next one, Section E, Bright Ideas, but that's not mine. I don't know who they talking about.
(LAUGHING).
I have some Bright Ideas, but nothing to do with this.
I don't. All right. The Division of Public Health and Preparedness and Response Branch makes competitive funding available to local health departments for innovative projects, and our agency submitted an application. The Onslow County Health Department was one of nine health departments to receive funding and was awarded $46,756 to implement the Stop the Bleed campaign. This will include additional resources for the county as well as training for Onslow County school staff. There is no county match required for these funds. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the Bright Ideas funding in the amount of $46,756.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next one is yours also, Ms. Lee.
Okay. This is Minority Health and Health Disparities Funding. The Office of Minority Health and Health Disparities is working in various communities around the state to address racial and minority health concerns. Currently, in North Carolina, it ranks in the bottom third in terms of life expectancy in the United States, and the most recent data tells us that minorities are dying due to cardiovascular disease, cancer, and diabetes. The Health Disparities Funding was awarded to the Onslow County Health Department in the amount of $18,000 with no county match required, and we plan to utilize this funding to provide culturally and linguistically appropriate services, training for our staff and for the community. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the Minority Health and Health Disparity Funding in the amount of $18,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appointments, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first set of appointments before you this evening is the Onslow County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Ashley Faircloth, who serves currently in the Richland Township category, has resigned, of course, leaving a vacancy. Ms. Nicole Fontana, currently in the at-large seat, is willing to serve in the Richland Township category. So that's why we have four individual seats for your consideration. Let's see, there are currently three other vacancies, that being the White Oak Township, the Jacksonville Township, and now the at-large category. Mr. Kevin White, Ms. Allison Westpaul, and Ms. Mary Beth LaMaire have expressed an interest in serving in these categories. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancies have been advertised, and all of the applications have been certified by the clerk and are on file in her office. The specific action requested is respectfully consider the appointments of Ms. Nicole Fontana for the Richland Township, Ms. Allison Westpaul for the Jacksonville Township, both for remaining three-year terms expiring June 30 of 2020. Next would be Mr. Kevin White for the White Oak Township, and Ms. Mary Beth LaMaire at-large for a remaining three-year term, which would expire on June 30 of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Onslow County Board of Adjustment, appointment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jerome Shaw, in the Richland category, has expressed a willingness to continue serving. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Jerome Shaw for the Richland's category for a term, three-year term expiring January 31 of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Consent agenda, we didn't have anything transferred from the front. We're at Item 8. Now, back to public comment. Anyone signed up, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second public comment period. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each.[1586.41]
each. Mr. Larry Baldwin of Midway Park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Larry Baldwin. I serve a number of different positions, but tonight I'm here as the Executive Director for the White Oak New Riverkeeper Alliance, which is a water advocacy organization that you're probably all familiar with to some degree. I'm here tonight to begin the discussion for the Commissioners to adopt a resolution opposing offshore drilling and seismic blasting. I do have a packet of information here that I can leave with you or I can give you at this point. So, like I said, it's the issue with, and the one that's really kind of at the forefront right now is this issue of seismic blasting. There's some pretty good graphics and information, and there's exactly what seismic blasting does. There's a lot of misconceptions about seismic blasting, about what it's doing to the environment, what it's doing to the wildlife, the aquatic life that is being impacted. But if I can get you to think about the loudest sound that you have ever heard, and then multiply that by 100 times, 1,000 times, the sound that we're using, which is an explosion of air in the water, it's an array of basically air bombs, for lack of a better term, that are pulled behind a vessel, and these sonic blasts go off every 10 seconds, 24 hours a day for months at a time. Science has shown that there is an impact to the wildlife, not just the whales that we might consider because they hear like we do, just underwater, obviously, but also all the way down to the basis of the food chain, the krill, the phytoplankton, that are being destroyed as a result of these seismic blasts. So what we would like to get into is a discussion as to how we can inform this Board of Commissioners as best as possible to adopt a resolution. And there's information in the package as well, too, that talks about some of the other places that have already adopted a resolution to oppose seismic blasting. Goes all the way up to our current governor, Governor Cooper, who has come out very strongly opposing seismic blasting and offshore drilling. Secretary of the Environment, Michael Regan, also has come out strongly opposing this action off of the coast of North Carolina. One of the things that comes up very frequently is it's about economics, and there's a lot of misconception with that as well, too. It's not going to be an economic benefit for North Carolina or for Onslow County, and we can get into that more. What I would like to request is an opportunity to come give a presentation to the Board, if that's acceptable, a little more in-depth with some more information, or whatever method we can best kind of get that discussion going. There's a lot that could be talked about in more than five minutes. So if it would be possible to get on the full agenda at a future meeting, that would be something that I would look very much forward to. So I appreciate the time here this evening. Like I said, take a look at the package that you have in front of you. If you get a little confused because it says my email is Crystal Coast Waterkeeper, it's one of the hats that I was talking about wearing. So Onslow County, the eastern part of Onslow County, the New River, the White Oak River, they're precious, and it's something that I know you all have a strong interest in protecting for the citizens of Onslow County. So with that, I will say thank you, and I will contact the clerk, I guess, at some point to see about getting on the agenda. So if there are any questions, well, we don't do that at this time. But again, thank you for what you do. Thank you for protecting Onslow County. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is our clock, our clock broke?
I'm not sure. We'll look into it.
I think he was right at, I think he was right at five minutes, right on the button. Okay. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple. Just a reminder for the workshops for the public, if anyone is interested in attending, the Commissioners will be conducting two workshops coming up next week on January 28th. We will be meeting with the Board of Education, and then the Commissioners will be meeting with the City of Jacksonville as well to talk about agenda items of mutual interest. And then the other is the State of the Community Address, which is coming up February 1st. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments. I'll start off with Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. First thing I want to do is thank, congratulations to all of our employees that have retired. It's an honor to have you working for us, and you've heard me many, many times talk about our employees are the best there are, and we're proud to have them. And I know Commissioner Bright had asked a couple of them to stay on, and I know Angela's probably asked him that two or three times, but it's just rewarding to us sitting up here because the work that you do makes it easier for us sitting up here to make decisions that we make in behalf of the citizens of Onslow County. So I want to thank you for that. David, I have a question in reference to the, didn't we not do a resolution on offshore drilling?
As he was talking about that, I recall we did.
I think we did one.
The Commissioners did take up a resolution, but I think it may have been geared towards the windmills. Ben, Brett? I'll have to do some research. I do know that you did take up the topic, but offhand...
But I would like to see the gentleman come back and do a workshop for us, not in one of our meetings here, but one of our workshops. I think it would be very beneficial to all of us because that seismic, that stuff is really important to me.
Yes, sir.
Being I live in Swansboro, but plus I'm a avid fisherman, so I know what that can do to our wildlife, and I'm concerned about that. So if that's something that the rest of the Commissioners would like to see, I sure would like to see that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Foster?
Just take a minute to share. We get a lot of, appears to be a lot of information, and we make a lot of votes or decisions on the nightly meetings or the monthly meetings we have, but I don't think everybody realizes we get this information well ahead of time, and we're well-informed and do a lot of research and opportunity to ask questions. So just something that I've learned, that I felt like y'all were very informed when you made decisions, but it was, you get to see what's taking place, and a lot of well-informed decisions are made here. So that goes to a big thank you to Mr. Cotton and the staff of preparing everything for us. And Friday afternoon, I just wanted to thank or let everybody know or aware of Onslow County Animal Shelter and the adoptions that are available there. My family and I stopped by there Friday afternoon. My youngest son was looking for a dog, puppy, and I just wanted to give, I think, Mr. Martin, I think the director's here tonight, I think I see him out in the crowd. I just want to give a thank you to that group for outstanding job and the service and the, just the professionalism that I saw them present to the people that come in the building and the care they give to the animals. And for those of you that are interested in an animal, or a dog in particular, or kitten, cat, I suggest you go visit the animal shelter. You know, that was a great experience for us, so we appreciate what you do there. And then just a congratulations to the retirees. That's a lot of effort and a lot of time, and we thank you for that. And Onslow County is pretty neat. We have someone that retires, lots of people that retire from the military, stay here, then they go on to continue service to Onslow County. So we thank them for that, and we thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Thank you, sir. Move now to Commissioner Shanahan.
I had the pleasure of speaking with District Attorney Ernie Lee today, who asked me to convey his thanks to the rest of the Board for the new space for the District Attorney's Office in the new courthouse. He says that they're incredibly excited to be there and that morality of offices skyrocketed as they've moved into that new space, and they look forward to being in that space for years and years to come. And I'd like to extend an invitation to the public. If you haven't seen the new courthouse, take a few minutes to come look at it. It really is a great setup, and it will be a lot more fun to see voluntarily as opposed to being required to go see it. So make an effort to swing by.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price.
I'd also like to congratulate our retirees for all the years of service, Onslow County as well, and appreciate it, all you've done through the years. We did have our budget goals meeting as a core of Commissioners here, and we came up with five or six goals. Just run through a couple of those for you. No tax increase, provide necessary funding for public safety, fund our volunteer fire departments, acceptable funding there, seek a sustainable funding formula for Onslow County schools, and once again, examine the pay of our county employees to make sure that we're up to a market level there as well. Also, Vice Chairman and myself were able to go to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference, and we came up with, I think there was like 30-some goals overall, but there were top five priority goals that we're going to be emphasizing as they lobby the state legislature on behalf of all 100 counties. So I wanted to share those five goals with you. Number one was seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure and broadband capability to the unserved and underserved areas and residents of the state. That reminded me that we're having a meeting in Jacksonville, I think at the end of this month. I think it's January 30th on broadband, as it's a big push on behalf of the municipalities as well for broadband, so that's one of our goals. Number two, seek additional revenue sources, including statewide bond, lottery proceeds to equitably address statewide public school and community college capital challenges. Number three, support efforts to preserve and expand the existing local revenue base of counties and authorize local option revenue sources already given to any other jurisdiction to all counties, oppose efforts to divert to the state fees or taxes currently allocated to counties or to erode existing county revenue streams. That third one there is very important to us because, of course, we have already passed a resolution to encourage the sales tax to allow the counties or Onslow County the ability to increase the sales tax in support of financing the necessary services for our people. Number four, support provision of state resources to ensure county ability to provide essential public health, behavioral health, and social services with specific consideration to the challenges of incarcerated persons, the continued county role in behavioral health governance, and programs addressing substance abuse disorders throughout the Medicaid transformation because Medicaid is being transformed into more of a managed care situation, kind of like what happened with behavioral health care and behavioral health issues there as well. The fifth one, seek legislation to repeal the statutory authority under North Carolina General Statute 115C-431C that allows the local school board to file suit against the County Board of Commissioners over appropriations to the local Board of Education's capital outlay fund. So those are our five goals for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. A lot of things that really impact us as well, so I wanted to share those with you. And I got the opportunity to tour the courthouse as well. It's very impressive, something I feel like all citizens of Onslow County can be very proud of, and have a good evening.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Knapp?
First, I just want to say thank you to all the retirees for all your hard work and your dedication. As a retiree myself, I know you put in a lot of long hours, and you're now at the end of your career, and I hope you enjoy it and take time for your families and spend a lot of time with them if you can. Just want to remind everybody, on the 15th of February, our Detox Center is going, we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for our Detox Center. To me, this is huge. I've said it before. Two years in the running for this, two years in the making that we've worked hard together with the city and the other counties to get this Detox Center up and running. As I said before, it's not an end-all, but it's definitely a huge step in the right direction, and we'll be able to provide some much-needed services to people that require this. It's, you know, it's our way of combating the opioid epidemic, and I know a lot of people kind of just go with things and they don't really understand, but the opioid epidemic is very, very serious in this country, very, very serious in this county, and, you know, a lot of us have been touched directly by the effects of the opioid epidemic. So I'm excited about this like you wouldn't believe, and I just can't wait for it to open and we can start providing the services. So my hat's off to all those people that were involved in making this happen. Sherry's not here tonight, but she was instrumental in getting this task force up and running and providing the guidance under David's leadership, and I appreciate it very, very much. We will be talking, you know, with the Commissioners here soon. We've been talking about our budget, and we've been talking about a lot of things. One thing that I do want to mention that we'll be discussing, because it is important, and it's important to a big segment of Onslow County, and that's the anti-tethering laws or ordinance. We're going to be discussing that in detail, whether it be in a VOC meeting or whether it be a workshop, but we are going to be discussing it. And a lot of people, if you haven't noticed, in Onslow County, this is an animal-loving county. I mean, I have three dogs, people have pets, and I really seriously believe that we need to look into this, get our ordinance enacted, because I think there's some things there that we could probably fix and try to help those with animals and to prevent the suffering of some of these animals during the summer and winter months. If you go outside and sometimes you'll see dogs that are tied up in the cold at 22 degrees, you know, for a couple of hours, you know, I just kind of look at it, how would you like to be tied up out there for a couple of hours, you know, with no clothing or no shelter or anything in sub-zero temperatures? So that's something that we're going to be talking about here very soon. And Mr. Baldwin, thank you for your presentation. I didn't even know what seismic bombing was until you mentioned it. I always wondered, you know, what constitutes seismic blasting, and it's very, very interesting. And if you say they're using like an air bomb or something like that within the water system, I can see where it can cause some damage, and I'm with Commissioner Buchanan. I would like to see that addressed soon, if possible, so that we can find out what, you know, what the process is, how it affects our coastal line, or coastline, I should say, and how it affects our environment. Because based on what you just told us tonight, that could have some devastating effects. So, but I appreciate your taking the time. And I just want to say thank you for all that came out tonight. Be safe, get home safely, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Knapp. Vice Chair Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to avoid repeating everything that's already been said, but I did want to wish the best to Scott Chase, the Swansboro Town Manager, who's gone on to other things. And I wanted to mention the hurricane debrief that we had last week. I think there were almost 100 participants in the debrief, and it was a really good opportunity for all our communities to come together and talk about the issues that we had during the storm so we can prepare better for the next one. Thank you, Mr. Cotton, for arranging that. Also want to congratulate the Naval Medical Center, the trauma center opened that had a ribbon-cutting last week, and that was a very nice event. It's going to be a big benefit to Onslow County to have that Level III trauma center right here in Onslow County for the citizens who have needs. So thank you all for being here and hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Somebody mentioned about Ernie Lee and the courthouse. He actually sent a formal letter, and I think I gave it to the clerk, a copy for everybody. He sent it to all the Board in my name, but also thanking Mr. Cotton for keeping your thumb on everything while the construction was going on and keeping everything in tact. Now, we got a ribbon cutting for that or a grand opening on the 15th, same day as the Crisis Center, Dick's Crisis Center opening. So we've got a couple of things going on that day, going to be busy for the Commissioners. I'd like to, for everybody to see that the department heads out here in the audience that's sitting all around, I want to thank all of you. There's a lot of you that come to these meetings and you don't really have anything on the agenda, but I appreciate you being here, appreciate your time, and appreciate the ones of you that did come up and do your presentations. I really thank you for that. If it wasn't for, as I said earlier, for our employees, we wouldn't be as in good a shape as we are, especially with the hurricane and stuff like that. But other than that, I want to wish everybody a safe trip home, drive careful, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks.